Hello, I'm J Jermaine Day of Alonian Morse's Parade, Antay Kallarana. The acronym is ANPAC and the Chief Judge of Consular Court. Today is Class 72, Class 72. What did we learn in Class 71? Well, we're still going through Chapter 6 of the Act Austeris of 1906, right? We were finishing up, right? We were dealing with what? Articles 105 through 119, right? And what do we learn in Chapter 6? It was all about the Sultan. The Sultan of Morocco during that time in 1906 was trying to find a way to reign in the order because the empire was starting to spiral. The colonists were taking over all the territories and the empire was now starting to lose its infrastructure. The Sultan now was losing monies, he's not collecting his taxes, he's not enforcing his laws. So he had to reign in the order, right? So therefore, the Sultan has put together these seven, seven chapters. These seven chapters that now gives him back power through what? His pen, right? So the Sultan then started marching and praying. The Sultan said, "Keep hope alive." The Sultan said, "Can we all just get along?" No, you know what he did? He enacted laws through his pen. He utilized his government position in his office. That is exactly what these people that refer themselves as Negroes, Blacks, Coloreds, African Americans, Pan-Africans, and Moors Americans have failed to do. We have failed to understand the power of the pen through legislation. But the only way you can have legislation, you have to have your own state government. Only the officials of a state can enact legislation. Only through the pen can we put an end to colonialism, right? So in Chapter 6 of the Act Austeris of 1906, what's happening here? Let's get the proper context, right? The Sultan's reigning in the order for himself. But the Sultan also recognized he had to protect the best interest of the Moors. Why is that? Because the Sultan recognized that he himself is sitting over the Moors Empire as a trustee. He himself is an heir. He himself is a descendant of the Ottoman Empire. He himself has now conquered the Moors Empire. And he recognized in order for him to keep power, he has to hold on to the golden goose. And what's the golden goose? The Moors that are asleep as well as the Moors land. And the Moors through acquiescence had allowed the Sultan to be this Sultan over the Moors Empire. So the Sultan now is breaking out his pen in 1906, enacting laws. What type of laws? International laws because his laws crossed over the seas and crossed over the borders of all states through a what? Treaty, a treaty is international law. So what should the Moors take away from Chapter 6? Well, Chapter 6 talked about what? Chapter 6, Article 105 talked about what? Immediately, the United States of America and the United States has agreed to what? That they can't do anything to supervise the impossibility of performance of Moors state governments. What about Moors state governments? It's all about your three branches of government, right? It's called your public services. What does public services mean? That's your courts, that's your laws, that's your police, that's your ability to tax, that's your ability to what? To oversee, manage, and govern, self-govern the affairs of your state. That's what that means, public services. That's Article 105 and the United States agreed they can't do anything to undermine that. They agreed. Article 106 talked about what? The fact that the Moors could utilize the power of their pen through legislation to control all of the corporations that are doing business in Morocco. And the United States of America and the United States agreed to these terms and conditions. That must be understood. So everything we learned about in Chapter 6 is about the Moors coming back into power to oversee all the corporations that's doing business in Morocco. That must be understood. We'll learn more about this in the future, okay? So let's go ahead and get into Class 72. As you already know, ANPAC study session opens up about the Constitution because the Constitution is paramount, right? It's the first enacted legislation that the Moors needed. When have you ever heard about our Negro spiritual leaders talking about constitutions of our own? Everything is about marching and praying and keeping hope alive. That is not the answer to the test. The answer to the test was always in our hands. We had the power of the pen and didn't even know it. Why didn't we know it? It's because we were not taught to treat, to read treaties. We were not taught to read treaties. We were taught to read history books that talk about the conquest of who? Colonists. Please keep in mind, the word colonist doesn't have a face. It's an action, it's an act. You have British Moors that came over and colonized Moroccan Moors. You have French Moors that came over and colonized Moroccan Moors. You have Spaniard Moors who came over and colonized Moroccan Moors. You have Portuguese Moors that came over and colonized Moroccan Moors. So never think of the word colonist having a face. It's an action. That must be understood. So now, what do we need to do in order to get our rights back? We have to pick up a pen and enact the first legislation, which is our Constitution. Each of the territories needs their own Constitution. It's the paramount document for who? The primogenitors of the land. Primogenitor means what? Firstborn. That's the whole Jacob and Esau story of Genesis, right? Genesis, Chapter 25, verse 20 through 25, something like that. It's about Jacob and Esau, right? Esau was born out the womb first. Jacob grabs his heel out the womb, say, "Where you going?" Jacob was upset. Why? Jacob came out second. And according to kind of law, he could not rule as long as Esau was still alive. So therefore, you must understand, in order for the Moors now to get into a status where the primogenitor means first, you need the first enacted legislation of the paramount Constitution that now takes you from being the older brother that's being ruled by your younger brother. The younger brother is ruling the older brother. And all this time, all the thing we need is a pen to get back our primogenitor and paramount status. Paramount means first. And that's what the Constitution does. It allows you as the oldest people on planet Earth to take your rightful place amongst the affairs of other nationals on planet Earth. In Morocco, you have the right to sit in the seats of governance. This is your house. Your house, you're standing on your land. The entire continent is Morocco. And the Moroccans are the indigenous people of the land. There's no such thing as Negro, Blacks, and Coloreds. There's 50 states in Africa. Which one of them we call Black? None of them. Fifty-five states, I should say, in Africa. There's 50 states in Europe. Which one is named White? None of them. So where did Black and White people come from? Nowhere. It's made up with a pen by the colonists. In order to do what? Take you out of your legal personality of being the oldest born, primogenitor, indigenous, Aboriginal person in your own homeland. They misclassified you. Then they turn around and called you Africans. You ain't African. You're Moroccan. Plus, Africa is a continent named after a colonist. America is a continent named after a colonist. So what's the original name of the land before Columbus got here? What's the name of the land before Columbus got here? Anybody know? Of course, they can't tell you. They don't tell you in books. It was Morocco. It still is. It's the pre-existing and existing land of Morocco and the United States have always known this. We'll continuously prove this through our treaties because why? Treaty supreme order land. So when in doubt, pull out the treaties and read it aloud. That is the truth. Let's move on. All right. So right now, we're about to enter into Chapter 7 of the Act Austeris of 1906. This is the last chapter, right? It only has four, four articles. So we'll get into these four articles. We'll read it aloud as we usually do. Obviously, we'll start off with the title and then we'll jump back into the provisional matters of the, of the, of the articles, right? As we start to close out the Act Austeris, we're getting very close, okay? Okay, all right. So obviously, Chapter 7 is about general provisions, right? General provisions. Seems like a simple title, general provisions. But everything is always in a title, Moors. I've always talked about this. Everything before you start is the preamble. It is the annex. It is the storyline about what you're about to get into, right? So what is the definition of provision? Let's look at Black's Law Dictionary. Yes, Black's Law Dictionary, this is what Black's Law Dictionary, Fourth Edition defines the word provision. Okay, Mother?
Provisions, food, victuals, articles of food for human consumption. State versus oldest case study. The word does not include a mulch cow. So let's see it.
All right. So, okay, let's go back to the treaty. So the treaty says... Okay, let's go to the treaty. Treaty, Act Austeris 1906, Chapter 7, general provisions. Is the treaty talking about food? No. So what is it the United States is trying to hide, right? They don't want to define the word provision. Why is that? Okay, because it gives you the answers to the test. Listen. So this is Black's Law Dictionary, Law Dictionary. But what you gotta understand is you gotta go down to the next word. See, they've redefined the word by changing the spelling of the word. The word is proviso. Proviso, which means provisions. So they buried the definition in the next word to give you the instructions of what you need to understand as it relates to a contract. Okay, Mother?
Proviso, a condition or provision which is inserted in a deed, lease, mortgage, or contract and on the performance or non-performance of which the validity of the instrument frequently depends. It usually begins with the word provided. It always implies a condition unless subsequent words change it to a covenant. But when a proviso contains the mutual words of the parties to a deed, it amounts to a covenant.
Thank you, Mother. Okay. All right, let's go back to your treaty. Okay.
You want me to read the rest of that?
Just a moment. Okay, so Chapter 7 talks about general provisions, right? General purpose. But provisions means what? It means what? Let's go back to the definition. This is important. It's really proviso the way they put it into their dictionary, but the word is provisions. But the United States of America put the word in their proviso in their Black's Law Dictionary, right? Because they're trying to bury some things, okay? Proviso, a condition or provision which is inserted in a deed, lease, mortgage, or contract. Treaties or contracts. So provisions are placed into a treaty. And according to the provisions of that treaty, these are certain steps you have to take. Proviso means what? Let's, let's go to the board up here. Listen, let's summarize it real quick. So on the board, I got what? Act Austeris 1906, Chapter 7, Articles 121, 23. We're looking at the definition of general provisions, more specifically provisions, right? It generally means what? It means what? Provided that you follow the instructions. Instructions are what? Everything was aforementioned in the contract. So any contract reads thoroughly, right? Now you must follow the contract. You must abide by the rules, the terms, the conditions of the contract, right? So proviso really means provided that you follow the instructions. If you don't follow instructions, you can't enforce the contract, right? So watch this. Proviso. Proviso is a condition or provision which is inserted in a contract and on the performance and non-performance of which the validity of the instrument frequently depends. So it depends on you following the instructions of the provisions aforementioned or said in advance. What, what's happening? Let's go back. Okay, so we're in Chapter 7. That means it was six chapters before that. That means if you don't follow these general provisions about what's about to be said from Articles 20 through Articles 123, that means you can't enforce the first six articles. The first six chapters, I should say. Right? So if this is Chapter 7, there were six more chapters before it. Now that you're in Chapter 7, it's gonna start off saying, "If you don't follow the instructions of this step-by-step they're about to tell you now, you can't enforce the first six chapters." That's what proviso means. Let's go back to the definition. It always implies a condition. So we use the condition. What's the condition as we, just before we read? Here the condition. We're gonna read Chapter 7's condition in order to enforce a treaty. If you don't follow the instructions that step off in Chapter 7, you can enforce the first six chapters and let me know this in advance, okay? Watch this. Okay. Mother?
The word proviso is generally taken for a condition, but it differs from it in several respects. For a condition is usually created by the grantor or lessor, but a proviso by the grantee or lesee.
Jacob.
Jacob.
Mm-hmm. You see what's happening? They're coding it now. Listen. The word proviso is generally taken for a condition. He's about conditions. You gotta go do these things in order to enforce something. But it differs from it in several respects. For a condition is usually created by the grantor or lessor. So who's, who's setting forth and creating some, some provisions? It was the Sultan of Morocco said, "You gotta follow these terms and conditions." He's what? He's the grantor and the lessor because he's the Sultan, right? He's the sovereign setting forth instructions, right? Okay, now check this out. Look what the United States puts in here. But, but, but a proviso by the grantee or lesssee. Jacob. What happened? Remember I told you about the story of Jacob and Esau, right? Esau's the firstborn. Then Jacob comes out the womb second. Grabs Esau by the heel. What's the heel representing? Reaching at the foundation of the firstborn to take away his right of what? Claimed to be the successor, the inheritor of the royalty for that family to take over the estate. Firstborn is first up to run the family. The oldest always runs everything, right? So look what they putting in. Jacob. This is what they call Masonic secrets. What happened? It says, "But a proviso by the grantee." Who's the grantee? The subordinate of contract. Who's the lesssee? The subordinate of contract. We're talking lease agreement. Lesee is the tenant, right? So Jacob was who? Second born. Jacob was what? The younger brother. Ruling who? The older brother. And who's the older brother? The older brother was doing what? The older brother's supposed to be grantor or the lessor. But the younger brother, who was up second, is now ruling over the grantor. Who's the grantor? Who's supposed to be the grantor and the lessor? The Moors. Who's ruling us right now? Colonists. They're our little brother. Ruling big brother. And the only way to get back your rights as the primogenitor, as the indigenous people, as the Aboriginals, is to understand how you can turn around and become the grantor or the lessor again, based upon what conditions? Okay, here's your conditions. Follow the instructions of the treaty. That's what proviso means. You gotta follow these general instructions. Let's go back to the board. General provisions for Chapter 7 means provided that you follow the instructions, then you can enforce a contract, right? One instruction. The instruction's about the triple principle. And what's the triple principle? Sovereignty and independence. That's statehood. Moors need a state. What's the second triple principle? Interior domains. Moors need to enforce their laws in their courts. What's the third triple principle? Economic liberty without any, any qual. That's the three principles, right? Did the Moors do that? No. We didn't follow the instructions. We've been marching and praying. We've said, "Keep hope alive. We shall overcome." How you gonna overcome without a state? Let me ask the Moors something. Have you ever been prosecuted by the state? State of Oklahoma versus you for speeding ticket? They're telling you the state is prosecuting you and you don't even realize if the state's prosecuting you, then how do you prosecute them? You needed a state to prosecute them. You gotta do things in light manner. How can you bring a claim of reparations against a state when you don't have a state? This must be understood. So Moors were not following the provisions. Moors were not following the general proviso that set up conditions so you can take back your claim as Esau. Away from who? Jacob, who has your pen. Let's get into these articles. Article 120. And we're gonna read Article 120 through 123 and then I'll come back and recap, okay, Mother?
Okay. Chapter 7, general provisions. Article 120. With a view to harmonizing its legislation, if the occasion arises with the engagements contracted under the present general act, each of the signatory powers engages to take the necessary steps leading to the enactment of such legislation as may be necessary so far as it is concerned. Article 121. The present general act shall be ratified according to the constitutional laws of each state. The ratifications shall be deposited at Madrid as soon as practicable and at the latest by December 31, 1906. A pro se verbal shall be made of such deposit and a certified copy sent to each of the signatory powers through the diplomatic channel. Article 122. The present general act shall enter into effect as soon as all the ratifications shall have been deposited and at the latest on December 31, 1906. In case of special legislative measures which may be necessary in certain countries to ensure the application to their nationals living in Morocco of certain stipulations of this present general act shall not have been enacted by the date fixed for ratification. These stipulations shall only become applicable in respect to them after the legislative measures above referred to shall have been promulgated. Article 123 and last. All treaties, conventions, and arrangements of the signatory powers with Morocco remain in force. It is understood, however, that in case of conflict between their provisions and those of the present general act, the stipulations of the latter shall prevail in faith whereof the delegates plenipotentiary have signed the present general act and have affixed their seals thereto. Done at Algeciras the seventh day of April, 1906, in a single copy which shall remain deposited in the archives of the government of His Catholic Majesty and of which certified copies shall be transmitted through the diplomatic channel to the signatory powers.
All right. Thank you, Mother. All right. So let's go on back up. Article 120 and recap, all right? So as we know, right now, we're reading Chapter 7 of the Act Austeris 1906. It's about general provisions. The proviso. What did we learn already in the title? You gotta follow these conditions. These are fundamental instructions. And if you don't follow it, you can't enforce it, okay? So what are the first instructions, right? Instructions are what? What, what are we reading the instructions for? For all the prior six chapters set forth certain provisions. And Chapter 7 says, "The only way you can enforce the first six chapters, you have to now check these boxes." And here are the boxes. Okay. Article 120. With a view to harmonizing its legislation. If the occasion arises with engagements contracted under the present general act, each of the signatory powers engage to take the necessary steps leading to engagement of such legislation as may be necessary so far as it is concerned. What's happening? Right here, these are the instructions the Sultan put together. The Sultan put this together on behalf of what? The Moroccan Empire, which means everybody in the Moroccan Empire has to follow these instructions if in fact they want to enforce this treaty, this contract, right? So listen. So with a view to harmonizing its legislation, what does that mean? That's an organized, dual society. You're coming together to harmonize. Well, how do you harmonize? With a pen. What is legislation? Legislation with a pen. You type it up, you sign off on it, now doing what? Bringing it to law, right? And now it becomes ratified and becomes the public law of the state. That's what legislation is for. And but you can't have legislation without what? A legislative branch. Well, if you got a legislative branch, that means you got a judicial branch and executive branch. That means now you got a state, if in fact you have a constitution, right? So listen. Article 120. With a view to harmonizing its legislation. If the occasion arises with engagements contracted under the present general act, each of the signatory powers engage to take the necessary steps leading to the enactment of such legislation. What do they mean with an enactment of legislation? You have to take it through what? The legislative branch, right? Which is the Speaker of the House, the legislators, the delhi, izis of your Moors state have to enact a bill, right? So the United States does what? The United States has House of Representatives and they got the Senate. They put together a joint resolution called a bill. And then what they do with that bill? They send it to who? The President. The President then signs that bill into what? Law. Then it becomes law. In order for you to have legislation, first it has to go through a step-by-step process. It starts with the legislators and then the executor, i.e. the President, Prime Minister, or YCRS of your Moors state, signing it into law. So it says it right here. Each of the signatory powers engages to take the necessary steps. The necessary steps. The necessary steps leading to the enactment of such legislation as may be necessary so far as it concerned. What happened? Did the Moors take the necessary steps according to the treaties to follow what? The provisions, the conditions, the instructions? No, we didn't. What did we do? We started writing writs and affidavits. What did we do? We marched and prayed. What did we do? We went up to Capitol Hill and said, "We shall overcome." And all we had to do is pick up a pen and follow the instructions of a treaty that came out in 1906. This treaty is over 116 years old according to the year 2022. All we had to do was follow instructions. What's the next instructions? Okay, listen. Article 121. The proviso conditions, it says what? The present general act, which is the treaty, shall be ratified according to the constitutional laws of each state. Let's pause right there. How you gonna ratify a treaty if you don't have a constitution or a what? State. Black people been wanting equal rights. How do you get equal rights? The answer to the test is right here. You need a constitution. And the only way to have a constitution, you have to have a state. So the state and the constitution are one. It's like a two-sided coin. There is no state without the constitution and there's no constitution without a state. And then once you have a constitution, which means you have a state, and you have a state, which means you have a constitution, now you can ratify what? Laws. To get your equality. Now look at this right here. You see this word state? That's increasing for our viewers at home. State. You see how the United States put a little small s? Well, we already know for organic states is capital S. But you recognize the United States of America slitting in this small case s. Why? Because they know they don't have sovereign organic states. They have municipal corporations. The United States is a municipal corporation by their own definition. And in international law, the United States is known as an international organization. So they put a small case s to let you know that they know that just a charter or a corporation is supposed to be a capital S, right? So let's start all over. Article 121. These are the proviso, the conditions, the instructions, say what? The present general act, the treaty, the act shall be ratified according to constitutional laws of each state. Each state. So the Moors need what? Several states. Each state. How many states? Fifty-plus states. Everywhere the colonists is claiming they have a constitution, your job is come in to be the successor with your constitution that outlines what? The latitude, longitude that you've taken over of that state. All the Moors need a constitution in each of the states. That must be understood. Listen. The ratifications shall be deposited. Wait a minute. So we gotta ratify and we gotta deposit. Sound like instructions. Tell me when the Negroes, Blacks, Coloreds, Tell me when the Negroes, Blacks, Coloreds, African-Americans, minorities, Pan-Africans, Moorish-Americans ever ratified and deposited the new law that they've now acceded to to say they have a right to claim of the land through their constitution or state. Tell me the name of the state that the Blacks have. Tell me the name of the state that the Moorish-Americans have. Tell me the name of the states that anyone of color has that can claim and say the name of that state. What's the name of the state that's your indigenous state? Most people know the state of Michigan, Oklahoma, Alabama, Mississippi, South Carolina, North Carolina, New York. You name it, we can name those. Those states belonged to the colonists. How you gonna get equal rights when you were inside of their jurisdiction state? You were supposed to take over and be the successor to come up with your own constitution. Here we go. This is Anpack's Constitution as an example. Anpack's Constitution talks about its dominions, right? There's our dominions, our latitude longitude. Let's read it out loud. Dominions. The dominions for a lot of the Moorish praetorium, I think Colorado. Now include all land, air, and waterways within latitude thirty-seven degrees north to forty-one degrees north by longitude one oh two degrees west to one oh nine degrees west. Our earth dominions are three hundred and eighty miles long, east to west, and two hundred and eighty miles wide, north to south, with the geographic center point being at latitude thirty-eight degrees fifty-nine point nine feet north by longitude one oh five degrees thirty-eight point five feet west. The total area of land and waterways is one hundred and four, one hundred and one square miles, which is one hundred and three, seven hundred and thirty square miles of land and three hundred and seventy-one square miles of water. The lowest point is three thousand three hundred and fifteen feet above sea level, known as Arkansas's River. And the highest point is fourteen thousand four hundred and forty feet above sea level, known as Mount Everest. These are the dominions from the center of the earth through our divine footprint into the farthest regions of the cosmos upon which we thrive, through which we heal, and which we are restored. That is the restoration of your nation. But where is this latitude longitude located? Okay, let's take a look at it. Right here. That latitude longitude, I just said it right here. The latitude longitude, right there. We have now reclaimed our land. Cause what? We followed the instructions of the treaty. The treaty says what? Let's go back to it. Article one twenty-one says, the present general act, the treaty, shall be ratified according to the constitutional laws. What's our constitutional law? Our dominions, based upon our land. So within our land, we get to enact this law. It says, of each state. So our state of Anpack as an example, right? It says, the ratification shall be deposited. So our constitution, listen. Our constitution was deposited with the United Nations and according to the customary norms of international law. We'll talk about that, right? So listen. We need a constitutional law of our state in order to perform a ratification in order to enforce the act. Cause we're following the instructions. This will make sense to you, let's continue reading. So the ratification shall be deposited at Madrid. But wait. We ain't deposited at Madrid, cause this was written in nineteen oh six. Where's the new place you deposit now? The United Nations, right? Where's the United Nations headquarters located? Commonly known as New York, right? Which is a corporation, New York's a corporation. But this is where you deposit now, in the United Nations, according to what? Article one oh two, listen. This is... This is the Charter of United Nations of nineteen forty-five. Article one oh two. It says what? Chapter what? Sixteen, miscellaneous provisions. Article sixteen, chapter sixteen, I should say, miscellaneous provisions. Proviso, what does proviso mean? You gotta follow these instructions. What's instructions say? Article one oh two says what, mother?
Every treaty and every international agreement entered into by any member of the United Nations after the present charter comes into force shall as soon as possible be registered with the Secretary and published by it.
Stop right there, we'll come back to this. So article one oh two, section one, every treaty and every international agreement. What's an international agreement? Constitutions. Constitutions is international law. So every treaty and every constitution has to be what? Every treaty and every international agreement such as Moors treaties entered into by any member of the United Nations after the present charter comes into force, shall, shall as soon as possible be registered with the Secretary and published by it. So, when we deposited our constitution, talking about Anpack, as an example, all Moors will have to do this. When we deposited our constitution, we notified the United Nations, and we followed the instructions. We deposited our constitution with the United Nations. Why? Because what? Let's go back to the treaty. The Act of Algeciras of nineteen oh six. Article one twenty-one says what? The ratification shall be deposited at Madrid. You replace Madrid with what now? United Nations. So the United Nations comes out with their, their charter that says what? Okay, let's go to it. Nineteen forty-five, article one oh two talks about what? Miscellaneous proviso, conditions, instructions. So what did we do as Moors? We followed the instructions, what did we do? Number one, every treaty and every constitution entered into by any member of the United Nations after the present charter has come into force, shall as soon as possible be registered with the Secretary and published by it. So we have to deposit our constitution with the United Nations to follow what? To follow what? The instructions. Okay, let's continue.
No parts?
Yeah. Ah, that's a, that's the first time it ever happened. Yeah. Oh, okay, let me get my bearing, okay. Okay, your brother Chad, I'll give you three seconds, okay? Okay, Moors. So, keep in mind, in article one twenty-one, the ratification shall be deposited at Madrid as soon as practicable, and at the latest by December thirty-first, one thousand nine hundred and six, right? This is back in nineteen oh six. A pro se verbal shall be made of such deposit, and a certified copy sent to each of the signatory powers through the diplomatic channel. So what would we supposed to deposit and send a certified copy? Copy of our constitution. As well as what? If we accede to this act, become a party to it, we also have to notify other parties who's a party to this contract. The United States of America is a party to this treaty. This is the original Moors treaty, and the Moors also have to be a party to it. How do you become a party to it? You must accede to it, you must accept it, and become a party to it with your pen, through legislation. And then you do what? You deposit, give notice to the United Nations, let them know, tell everybody on planet Earth, especially if they're a party to this treaty, that the Moore state government is now a party to this treaty that will weaken and enforce this treaty. Did the Moors do that? No. Did the Negroes, Blacks, and Coloreds do that? No. Negroes, Blacks, and Coloreds don't even have a state. They're waiting for civil rights. What does civil rights mean? Limited rights, not full rights. Cause you were never a citizen of the United States of America, you are a Moroccan, not American. So they gave you civil rights, which means you got limited rights. You're a three-fifths person. Listen. Article one twenty-two. The present central, excuse me, the present general act, i.e. this treaty, shall enter into effect as soon as all the ratifications shall have been deposited. So what's happening? As soon you follow the instructions, you can enforce the treaty, cause treaty's supreme of all the land, now you can enforce it. But if you don't follow the instructions, you can't enforce a treaty because the instructions already been set forth. Articles one twenty to one twenty-three, we're reading the instructions, and Moors did not follow the instructions. This was written in nineteen oh six, we're in the year twenty twenty-two. Hundred and sixteen years later, we still have failed to follow the simple instructions. Listen, start from the top. Article one twenty-two, the present general act shall enter into effect as soon as all the ratifications shall have been deposited, and at the latest on December thirty-first, one thousand nine hundred and six. In case the special legislative measures, which may be necessary in certain countries to ensure the application to their nationals living in Morocco of certain stipulations of this present general act, shall not have been enacted by the date fixed for ratification. These stipulations shall only become applicable in respect to them after, after, after the legislative measures above referred to shall have been promulgated. What does that mean? You can't enforce this contract until you follow the instructions. And Moors been running around talking about, enforce the constitution. Oh, we gonna enforce our treaties. They, they, they're breaching the treaties. They're not following the instructions. They, they, they supposed to respect what Moors say. Uh huh, they sure do, they're supposed to respect what we say, when we respect ourselves. When we learn how to read the instructions that's set forth in our own Moors treaties. We have delayed our own justice all because we didn't know how to read, and those that can read did not take the time to read our own Moors treaties that told us the instructions one hundred and sixteen years ago. So the instructions said what? Let's read again. In case the special legislative measures which may be necessary in certain countries to ensure the application to their nationals living in Morocco. So Moors live in Morocco, and we had to do what? We had to ensure that we did what? Follow the instructions. Because we live where? We live in Morocco. So therefore, we had to ensure that we followed the proviso, the provisions as well. Because contracts are a like manner. If you tell them to follow instructions, you have to follow instructions too. Did we do that as NBCs, Negroes, Blacks, and Coloreds, African-Americans, Moorish-Americans, Pan-Africans? No, we did not. Listen. From the top. In case the special legislative measures which may be necessary in certain countries to ensure the application to their nationals living in Morocco of certain stipulations of this present general act, the treaty, shall not have been enacted. If you didn't enact it, if you didn't enact the treaty, what does that mean if you didn't enact it? Means if you didn't ratify, deposit, and promulgate it, you can't enforce it. You don't follow instructions, you can't enforce it. Alright, so it says, shall not have been enacted if we didn't enact it by the date fixed for ratification. These stipulations shall only become applicable in respect to them after their legislative measures above referred to shall have been promulgated. Means you had to give everybody notice. You had to ratify with your pen through your government, then deposit it with the United Nations. The United Nations have a responsibility to tell everybody in the world, you're a party to this, and then your own state notifies everybody as well. Did the Moors do that? No. Did Negroes, Blacks, and Coloreds do it? No. Why not? Because we didn't follow the instructions, that's why, it's as simple as that. Article one twenty-three. And last, the last instruction of chapter seven. All, all, all treaties, all conventions, and all arrangements of the signatory powers with Morocco remain in force. It is understood, however, that in case of conflict between their provisions and those of the present general act, the treaty, the stipulations of the latter shall prevail. So what's happening? Let's go back up. Article one twenty-three. And last, last what? Instructions of what? Chapter seven of what? The proviso provisions instructions says what? And last, all treaties, all conventions, and all arrangements of the signatory powers. It means all of them. Moors wanna enforce the Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-seven? Moors wanna enforce the Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty-six? Moors wanna enforce the Treaty of Madrid or Convention? The Convention, the Convention of Madrid of eighteen eighty? Moors wanna enforce the Act of Algeciras of which we're reading right now? Then guess what? Guess what it says? It says, all treaties, all conventions, all arrangements of the signatory powers with Morocco. Listen. Remain in force. It is understood, however, that in case of conflict between their provisions and those of the present general act, the stipulations of the latter shall prevail. So what's happening? The Act of Algeciras shall prevail over all Moors treaties. That's if you became a party to this treaty. And the only way to become a party to this treaty, you have to follow the instructions. Which means you have to also become a party to all these other treaties. You can't enforce the seventeen eighty-seven treaty unless you did what? Follow these same instructions. You can't enforce the Sep- eighteen thirty-six treaty unless you follow these instructions, the ratification, depository, and promulgation. You can't enforce any contract unless your name is on it. And the only way to put your name on it, you must have legislation that says now you agree to become party to that contract, and you gotta let somebody know, hey, we put our name on it, we just wanna give you notice. Just that simple. In faith whereof, the delegates plenipotentiary have signed the present general act and have affixed their seal thereto, done in Algeciras this seventh day of April, one thousand nine hundred and six, in a single copy, which shall remain deposited in the archives of the government of his Catholic Majesty, and of which certified copies shall be transmitted through the diplomatic channel to the signatory powers. So what happened? What happened? Guess who's following these instructions? The United States of America, let's go to the top. Let's go to the very top of the treaty, Moors. Let's go to the very top of the treaty, Moors. Moors keep saying, well, the United States of America is criminal, okay? They're alleged criminals, okay? My question to the Moors is this. What have we done to ensure that we are enforcing our own rights? Cause you know what is happening right now while the Moors are talking? The United States of America is using a pen to enact legislation, they're following chapter seven. So what did they do with this? They followed the instructions. Look what happened, okay? So this is what? This is the general act of nineteen oh six, right? What did the United States of America do? They signed their adversaries, April seventh, nineteen oh six. Right, they became a party to it. What'd they do next? Ratification. And advised by the Senate, December twelfth, nineteen oh six, they followed instructions. What do they do next? Ratified by the President of the United States, December fourteenth, nineteen oh six. What'd they do next? They promulgated, ratification, deposit with the Spanish government, December thirty-first, nineteen oh six. Proclaimed, 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 promulgated, proclaimed, promulgated. January twenty-seventh, nineteen oh seven, they followed the instructions. And this is why they're able to enforce their civil and criminal courts against Negroes, Blacks, Coloreds, African-Americans, Moorish-Americans, and who else? Indians. Who else? Anyone who comes in a jurisdiction that has acquiesced to allow Jacob to oversee you as Esau.
Moorish-Americans.
Moorish-Americans, right? We as a people have acquiesced. We as a people have acquiesced. What does acquiesce mean? We consented by us not following the instructions of our own Moors treaties, but yet the colonists are following the instructions. All we have to do is check the boxes and follow the instructions. What's happening? This, up here I have on screen, Moors should be familiar with by now, soon you see it. This is what? This is Declaration, United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People. That the United Nations signed on behalf of indigenous people on planet came out with this in two thousand seven. Barack H. Obama, the President of United States International Organization, I E that municipal corporation, signed this on behalf of who? Indigenous people of Morocco, I E Negroes, Blacks, Colors, African Americans, Moors Americans, who think they're Americans. What did Barack Obama sign this for? Okay, Barack Obama read and said, dang. It mentions the word state in here forty-three times out of forty-six articles. The word state, state, capital S, state, capital S, is mentioned forty-three times in the rights of indigenous people. That's the common denominator to this declaration. But Moors read and said, eh man, we indigenous people, we're entitled to our rights. Yes, you are entitled. As long you do what? Follow the instructions and check the boxes of the proviso, of the provisions of your own treaty, okay? A- Article thirty-seven of the rights of indigenous people that Barack Obama signed in twenty-ten because he knew the more he did what? A state. Okay, mother. Article thirty-seven.
One, indigenous peoples have the right to the recognition, observance, and enforcement of treaties, agreements, and other constructive arrangements concluded with states or their successors. And to have states honor and respect such treaties, agreements, and other constructive arrangements. Two, nothing in this declaration may be interpreted as diminishing or eliminating the rights of indigenous peoples contained in treaties, agreements, and other constructive arrangements.
Okay, thank you, mother. Okay, so Article thirty-seven starts off saying indigenous people have the right, right? So let's change that generic language to what? Competent Moors states that have a constitution that's been ratified, deposited, and promulgated according to chapter seven of following the instructions can do what now? Competent Moors state governments have the right to the recognition, observance, and enforcement of treaties. Barack H. Obama knew this. He knew that more he the state. Okay, let's continue reading. Agreements and other constructive arrangements concluded with states. Barack H. Obama knew this. He knew indigenous people, I E Moors, needed states. States or their successors. Who's the successors? How do you become a successor? Okay, this is how you become a successor. Constitution says you're successor. Successor of what? The land. The land, you're successor of the land through the constitution that oversees all the inhabitants of that land. Now you get to enforce the triple principle of sovereignty, independence of what? Your state. Now you can enforce what? Integrity domains of what? Your state. You can enforce now what? Economic liberty without any inequality of what? Your state. Barack H. Obama knew we need a constitution that outline our dominions and set forth our three principles of government and a party of government is to now enact legislation and enforce your court's laws. Let's go back to it. Okay, Article thirty-seven. Competent Moors states have the right to the recognition, observance, and enforcement of treaties. Agreements and other constructive arrangements concluded with states or their successors. Who's the successors? More states are the successors of the land. Because now Esau is coming back to make a proper claim against Jacob and told him to brother, excuse me, I'll take it from here. With what? His pen. He reclaimed what? His inheritance of being the primo genitor, to being paramount. He was the first born. He had a right of claim. He's Esau is the successor, not Jacob. And to have states, capital S, honor and respect such treaties, agreements, and other constructive arrangements Barack H. Obama signs. You must understand why he cited in twenty-ten, he's trying to wake up the Moors. So you Moors want your rights, you Negro blacks and colors want your rights. First of all, you gotta figure out there's no such thing as black people. And since black people keep saying they're indigenous people, go read an indigenous contract and see what you need and enforce your rights. And you needed what? States. Section two, nothing in this declaration may be interpreted as diminishing or eliminating the rights of competent Moors states and their peoples contained in treaties. Agreements and other constructive arrangements. Let's go to Article thirty-six. Mother.
Number. Oh, okay, one. Section one, indigenous peoples, in particular those divided by international borders, have the right to maintain and develop contacts, relations, and cooperation, including activities for spiritual, cultural, political, economic, and social purposes with their own members as well as other people across borders. Uh, section two, states in consultation and cooperation with indigenous peoples shall take effect, effective measures to facilitate the exercise and ensure the implementation of this right.
Okay, thank you, mother. So Article thirty-six of the rights of indigenous people that Barack H. Obama tried to sign on behalf of people who think they're Negroes, Blacks, Colors, African Americans, Moors Americans, and Pan-Africans. He signed this for all of us. And it went right over our heads. Article thirty-six says what? Section one, indigenous people. Let's replace that what? Competent Moors states. That ratified, deposited, and promulgated their constitution and acceded to the treaties and through the treaties you ratified, deposited, and promulgated that as well. Now you can follow instructions and enforce their contracts. It says the competent Moors states and their peoples, in particular, those divided, listen. Those divided by international borders, those divided by international borders, those divided by international borders. How do you divide a border? You need a state. Let's go back to the United States and see what they did. Okay, let's look at the example. Alright, borders. So the rights of indigenous people is trying to tell the Moors what? You need a dividing state to separate yourself from others so you can have the rights of your own state to enact laws to protect your own nationals. How do we overcome? We shall overcome. How do we do that? We need what? Divided by international borders. What does that mean? We needed our own state. Listen. So competent Moors states have the right to maintain and develop contacts, relations, cooperations, including activities for spiritual, cultural, political, economic, and social purposes with their own members, own what? Nationals, citizens, nationals. As well as other peoples across borders. How do you cross over border if you ain't got no state? In order, you leave your state, you're crossing what? Your own border into what? Another state. All states touch another state. Mexico touches what? The corporate state commonly known as Texas and what? New Mexico areas of Arizona, et cetera, California, right? All states touch each other. Let's go back to an example. Let's go back to an example. All these borders touch, they touch. You go from one state right into another state. Okay, let's go back to what Barack H. Obama tried to tell us back in twenty-ten, now we in the year twenty-twenty-two. Twelve years later, and we still don't understand why he signed this for us. He put his political power on the table for us and this guy swept right underneath the rug. Our Negro blacks and colored spiritual leaders didn't even talk about this. CNN didn't talk about this. Fox didn't talk about this. BBC didn't talk about this. Article thirty-six, competent Moors states and their peoples, nationals, in particular those divided by international borders of their state, have the right to maintain and develop contacts, relations, cooperations, including activities for spiritual, cultural, political, economic, and social purposes with their own nationals as well as other peoples across borders. What do you mean across your state line? Section two, states in consultation and cooperation with indigenous people. Listen, so now let's replace this generic word of state with what? United States of America and the United States International Organization in consultation and cooperation with what? Competent Moors state governments and their peoples shall take effective measures to facilitate the exercise and ensure the implementation of this right. What right? For you to have your own state. To enforce your own laws as long as you follow the provisos, the provisions of the treaties. This must be understood. It's been in front of our face. The United Nations wrote this in two thousand seven. George Bush then signed it. Barack Obama comes into office, he signs it in twenty-ten. Moors still ain't comprehended this yet. But we claim we understand civics. What's happening? You have to understand something. We're being what? Gable monopoly. The Gable monopoly is the colonists controlling our great empire. They're controlling the trade routes, the seaports, they control the laws, they control the police, they control the military. They control everything that's movable and immovable in our own homeland as what? Trustees. You know who that is? J P Morgan. That's JP, JP Morgan. J P Morgan bailed out the United States Corporation in eighteen ninety-three. He gave them over sixty million dollars to bail them out because they had a great recession. It's called the Great Panic of eighteen ninety-three, eighteen ninety-four. Then they had another great panic of nineteen oh seven. So these private bankers keep bailing out the United States because the United States is their corporation. They're in, the bankers are injecting monies into a corporation, right? And what's happening? It gave them now control of what? The monopoly because the United States could never pay them back the money. So the bankers now control all of the land. This controls land. What type of land to them? Maritime and admiralty law. You notice the board is blue? Why is the board blue? Why is the board blue? The board is blue. It represents what? Admiralty and maritime law. When you look at the game, right? In real time, it's blue. It represents what? Maritime of the s- the law, the sea is now on the land. This is the whole what? Noah's Ark story. Everybody has perished and died and drowned and capsized and perished and now the bankers are saying ain't nobody alive, so we gonna take over all the property. And they're running their mayhem of the monopoly. Look at the word monopoly. It's red. What's red representing? The original Moroccan flag. The original, one of the original Moroccan flags is all red. That must be understood. So they're right here, the bankers saying they're running this cherry tree. George Washington chopped down the cherry tree, right? Red. And the bankers sitting here overseeing our great enterprise of our land as trustees. And they're controlling what? The police, they're controlling the jails, they're controlling electric companies, right? The electric companies. Right? They're controlling what? The treasury, they're controlling the taxes and the luxury taxes, they're controlling all properties. They're controlling all of the seaports. What's the seaport? You got the Mediterranean right here, right? You got Mediterranean. Right here you got Pacific Ocean, Mediterranean Sea, Pacific Ocean, right here you got Atlantic Ocean, right? You got all these oceans going on. It represents blue maritime admiralty law. And who's running it? Bankers. Which bankers? Okay. Federal Reserve. Federal Reserve running everything because why? Federal Reserve is private bankers. They're keeping the same thing going on that happened in the eighteen hundreds. The bankers took over the United States as a corporation. Right? Listen. The United States of America is what they put on the so-called dollar, currency, fiat, a bill. They call it a dollar bill. What's a bill? The absolute was no bills what? Debt. So this is a debt note. And right over here they say with that pyramid, they upside down seven. Right? There's seven that represents who? What's this shadow government represent? Oh, okay. Going back to it as a refresher. Federal Reserve. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Shadow government. Shadow government. Go back to it. Seven, right there, seven. Seven Federal Reserve members that's acting as trustees, right? But they tell you right in front of your face, it says right here in the box, it says the great seal. Then it jumps over here because this is a great seal, right? If this says the great seal right here, then what is this? I thought that was the seal. Oh, wait a minute. It says the great seal. Then it jumps over here and says of the United States. Well, wait, I thought it was the United States of America. What happened? Okay. After Congress eighteen seventy-one. United States of America, which was an organic state at first, sold out to the bankers. Forty-first Congress, session three, chapter sixty-one, sixty-two of eighteen seventy-one. What happened in eighteen seventy-one? All the Moors know about this. It's just a refresher. Chapter sixty-two, an act to provide a government for District of Columbia. This is what? Legislation, listen. Of the United States of America being enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives of the United States of America in Congress Assembly. That all that part of the territories of the United States, included within the limits of the District of Columbia be, and the same is hereby created into a government by the name of the District of Columbia, Washington, D C, by which name is hereby constituted a body corporate. So United States is a body corporate for municipal purposes and may contract and be contracted with, sue and be sued, plead and be pleaded, have a seal, and exercise all other powers of a municipal corporation. Not inconsistent with the constitution and laws of the United States and the provisions of this act. So wait, constitution and laws of the United States. Wait a minute. Ho- wait, hold up. I thought I could have sworn it was United States of America. But yet their seal right here at the bottom says of the United States. United States, United States of America, two separate entities. Two legal personalities. Why is this? Why are we going over this? Listen. They paid oath and homage to the constitution and laws of the United States. They don't take an oath to the United States of America, no. So if they're taking an oath to the United States and they just told you United States is a municipal corporation, wait a minute. They taking an oath to United States seriously? Okay, let's, let's prove it. Let's go down to section nine. Section nine, Moors. Section nine, the Moors know about this. It's important. Can understand how the bankers have taken over because the Moors haven't followed instructions to take it back over our own possessions, our own estate as Esau. So Jacob, J P Morgan, is running everything through the trustees of the Federal Reserve. Why? Because you Because the United States is a corporation that's governing over our great empire. Section nine says what? And being further enacted, that the members of the Legislative Assembly, before they enter upon their official duties, shall take and subscribe the following oath and affirmation as follows. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States. Wait a minute. I thought it was the United States of America. But down here on the seal it says of the United States, two separate entities. Because guess who's overseeing the United States corporation? What they tell you over here? These seven trustees, the seven trustees of the Federal Reserve. Is overseeing what? The corporation of the United States under the guise of the United States of America. Wait a minute. I better take that deeper. Nancy Pelosi, Speaker of the House, supposedly of the United States of America. But let's listen to her take her oath, shall we? Okay, here we go.
If the, if the gentlewoman from California would please raise her hand in what you're doing, do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office on which you're about to enter, so help you God.
I do.
Congratulations, gentlewoman.
Wait, 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 hold up, wait a minute. She took her oath to who? Okay. Let's go back. May, maybe we was hearing things.
If California would please raise her hand in what you're doing, do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and...
Did she say United States of America? Did she say United States? Matter of fact, did he say United States or United States of America?
United States.
Who did she say she took her oath to? Was the United States? A municipal corporation by their own statute. Let's listen to it again, shall we? Okay. There we go. We, we gotta get the record straight, Moors. Okay, here we go. All right, here we go.
If you would please raise your hand in what you're doing, do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear...
Why is the Speaker of the House taking her oath to the United States? Oh, okay. Let's go back to it. Because the Act of Congress, February twenty-first eighteen seventy-one, section nine says what? By their own legislation, it says section nine, and being further enacted, that members of the Legislative Assembly, Legislative Assembly, Legislative Assembly, who is that? Nancy Pelosi, Assembly, and who else? The Senate, the Senate is also legislators, Ms. McConnell, et cetera, before they enter upon their official duties, shall take and subscribe the following oath and affirmation as follows. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States. You see what's happening? Why is this important that we're going over this? You know why we're going over this? Let me tell you why. Because this dude, only reason why he's ruling is because Moors don't know how to follow instructions the same way J. P. Morgan knows how to follow instructions. And Barack H. Obama tried to point out to us that we need to understand states. And if we understood the word state through the rights of indigenous people, we would understood the words ratification, deposit, and promulgation. This is ratification, deposit, and promulgation, instructions. All because we failed to do what? Let's go to it. What did we fail to do? We failed to follow the simple instructions of chapter seven of the Act of Aldiserris nineteen oh six. It came out a hundred and sixteen years ago to this date of twenty-twenty-two. Because we didn't understand the word general provisos. So since we didn't follow the instructions, watch this. Now you go back to the Charter of the United Nations. Chapter sixteen, miscellaneous provisions. Article one oh two, right, said, section one says, every treaty and every international agreement entered into by any member of the United Nations after the present charter come into force shall as soon as possible be registered with the Secretary and published by it. However, if you don't follow the instructions, section two tells you what happens. Section two. No party, no party, no party to any such treaty or international agreement which has not been registered in accordance with the provisions, the instructions of paragraph one of this article may invoke the treaty agreement before any organ of the United Nations. So if you don't follow the instructions, you can't invoke the contract. You can't enforce the contract, which means you're stuck with marching and praying and civil rights. That's the truth.
That's what we've been telling, yeah.
So as I start to close out. Our treaty. Treaty of peace and friendship of year seventeen eighty-seven and year eighteen thirty-six. Article twenty-four also gave us instructions. These are Moors treaties. Article twenty-four. If any differences shall arise by either party infringing on any of the articles of this treaty, peace and harmony shall remain notwithstanding in the fullest force until a friendly application shall be made for an arrangement. And until that application shall be rejected, no appeal shall be made to our... What's happening in that first sentence? We were supposed to come up with a friendly application, right? And we got what? Any differences shall arise between either party. Who the parties? We claim as white people, black people, parties, right? We claim we're Moors against what? Christians, right? Muslim against Christian, we got all these different parties. If Moors, according to this treaty, have any differences with the citizens of the United States of America being the other party, what were we supposed to do? We were supposed to do what? We were supposed to come up with a friendly application. What was the friendly application? The Constitution first, that's what we needed first. And in order for us to enact laws, you need a constitution of state first. All states enact legislation, regulations, statutes, codes, ordinances, come from where? The state. We've been begging and going to them, trying to see if they'll enact something for us. Why would they do that? When they're looking at these treaties saying, y'all the primo genitor. Y'all the oldest born. Y'all got all these powers in these treaties and you asking, asking us to come up with some rules for you? When all you gotta do is enforce your own treaties. Now let's, let's wrap this up. Act of Aldiserris nineteen oh six as a summary. Let's summarize what the Sultan put together as we start to wrap up. Let's summarize. Let's summarize. So the Sultan opens up with what? The Sultan says, you know what? All the secretory powers, i.e. the colonists, came and signed this treaty. And it's, the colonists did what? The colonists furnished with full powers which were found in good and due form by the Sultan. The Sultan checked all to make sure they had what? States. All the colonists had states. They had state ID, they had constitutions. He made sure they was in good form, good standing. And having conformity with the program upon which his shereen majesty and the powers have agreed, United States of America agreed, successfully discussed and adopted. Here's what the United States of America agreed to. And the United States International Organization. Chapter one, a declaration relative to organization of the police. Chapter two, a regulation concerning the detection and repression of the contraband of arms. Chapter three, an act of concession for a Moroccan state bank. Chapter four, a declaration concerning a better return of taxes and the creation of new revenues for Moors. Chapter five, a regulation concerning the customs of the empire and the repression of fraud and smuggling. That's the Moors responsibility to enforce smuggling and fraud. Chapter six, a declaration relative to public services and public works and having decided these different documents might usefully be coordinated in a single instrument that have united them in a general act composed of the following articles. Then it goes into article one. This is a summary of articles one through seven of this treaty. It was the Moors' responsibility to follow the simple instructions that Moors have the power to do what? We have the power over who? Police. We have a power what? Regulation concerning what? The detection and repression of contraband arms. All these arms the colonists have, guess who gets to oversee it? Moors. Not black people. Moors. Who else? What else? Chapter three, an act of concessions for a Moroccan state bank. Moors said, black people said can't get no loans, no, no money. Guess what? We got a right to have our own banks according to the treaty, we followed the instructions. Chapter four, a declaration concerning a better return on taxes and the creation of new revenues. It was our job as Moors to collect the taxes and the revenue from who? The foreigners that are residing in our land. But instead, J. P. Morgan and his crew is collecting taxes from us. Chapter five, the regulation concerning the customs of the empire and repression of fraud and smuggling. Our job was to do what? Enact legislation, regulation concerning the customs of the empire, concerning the customs of our land and our states, right? And the repression of fraud and smuggling. What are legislation? It was the Moors' responsibility to enact legislation for a declaration relative to public services, which is your courts, your law enforcement, your judges, all your cops, your taxes you're collecting, et cetera, and the public works. Our job was to oversee this. And United States of America agreed that we, Moors, should be sitting where? The Moors should be sitting right there in the Senate. Not the trustees of the Federal Reserve. This is what we must understand as Moors. We've delayed our own justice. Stop pointing the finger at the colonists and look in the mirror and point the finger at yourself and ask yourself, where is your Moors state government? That you've come back and now acceded to it and now become a national of that Moors state? Have you followed the instructions to come back to a Moors state government? Tell me the name of your Moors state government that's been ratified, deposited, and promulgated according to the customary norms of international law. And if you can tell me the name of that, you're now on a yelbrick road to go back home. Esau. I am with that. Islam.